And this is Monday, August 18th in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. So I would like to welcome those of you who are here in the audience and those at home. And I think we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I want to just announce and say and thank the Falmouth Road Race, Director Dave McGilvery, the Board of Directors, all the people who made this weekend such an incredible weekend. I had the opportunity to go down on Saturday and then on Sunday. And it was really, it was different this time. And Saturday, we had the Falmouth Walk, you know, before the road race. And then after the road race on Sunday, they had the reception at Coonamesset. And they had all the runners of previous years, you know, Frank Shorters and Bill Rogers and Joan Bernoit Samuelson. And I know I'm going to miss somebody. And they also had Meb, I can't pronounce his name, who won the Boston Marathon last year. And he was there and spoke. And they were all just an inspiration to everyone. They made some changes down in Woods Hole. I think they were very helpful in terms of how the race started. It seemed to go off a little bit better. And they had the Masters Women come first after the wheelchair. So there were a lot of people in town. And I know some of us residents had a little hard time navigating around the town this weekend, to say the least. And I'm sure for some, it was an inconvenience. But I think for many, it was really an incredible weekend. And it puts Falmouth right on the map. And we benefited enormously from it in many ways. So I wanted to thank publicly again about the road race, Tommy Leonard, and all the people who make it possible.
I will add that.
And you ran. How did you do?
I did not.
Oh, you did?
I chose to spend the day with my son, who's leaving for college in Florida. I was amazed by four hours afterwards, when you drove through Woods Hole or down the roads, how little evidence there was that this huge event had happened. And that the cleanup that they do to make sure that the town gets back to where it was was really impressive this year.
And I think the humidity was pretty high yesterday. Even so, today, there were about 80 runners who were treated at the medical tent. But they were all okay. I mean, they took care of them, and that was it. And the police presence was amazing, as well as the fire department. So and all the town departments, the DPW, I mean, you could just see that people were there and coordinating things. Did someone else want to make a comment?
I would back up. I agree with this. And I think there was new organization, as my daughter ran and explained the difference. And she's run many years. She agreed with what you just said, as far as the flow. This year, I stood at the lighthouse. And I will recommend, and I'm saying this publicly, it is the most beautiful spot to watch that road race. And as they came down the hill, and they would kind of snake around and get down, right across from the ocean is the most beautiful view ever. And it continued and continued and it was, it was a fabulous place is to be. But now that I've said it out loud, I'll probably have lots of company.
Well, while you're on the topic of the lighthouse, I want to mention that we had our meeting today with the Coast Guard on the town's letter of interest to obtain a license for Navska. So there were some of us who, Sam was there, we met with the representative of the Coast Guard, plus some of the Coast Guard who actually managed the lighthouse, and those who actually managed the house. And it was a very interesting thing. And I actually climbed the lighthouse today to the very top and looked out at that awesome view. There was a three-masted schooner, because there was no wind, so the poor ship, you know, could hardly get. But the view from the top of that lighthouse is just unbelievable. Heather climbed, yeah, I think we, those of us who were there, we all climbed. It was great. Sam climbed to the top. Sam?
Yeah, you're absolutely right about the tour. But I did want to add about the road race, just the number of volunteers from this town participating.
Oh, yes.
Because I was there on the field, and I mean, I must have seen 20 people that I know of from other walks of life within this community, they're volunteering, you know. And I'll leave my wife out as one of them, but I think she's been doing it for 15 years. But she's just one. Hundreds of people.
Hundreds of volunteers.
That volunteer in many, many different ways. So it really is a community event and benefits us, I think, in a lot of different ways.
All right. So see, this is what happens when I chair the joint meeting. We have to get all of these good things out first. So now I think we're going to start with our first item tonight, which is a discussion of land use, coastal and housing components of the Falmouth Comprehensive Plan. And this is the Planning Board's topic. So I'm going to turn it over to Pat Kerford, Chair of the Planning Board.
First of all, I want to switch the order of this just a little bit. As to most complete and then least complete. The most complete, as you will know, is the coastal resiliency, because we have looked at that extensively. First, on a Saturday workshop sort of meeting, we looked at it again the last time we had a joint meeting. And when you all saw it the last time, it was the goal and the policies. And some comments came out of that. And when I talked to Marlene, I said, it's time that you get the whole picture. And so that's why you have the introduction to it. And it's why you also have our proposed action items for implementation. So I want you, as much as possible, to look at this as complete as it's going to get, except for your comments on it, if you want to see any changes in it. So this is ready to take to town meeting, in our estimation. But please remember that the only thing we take to town meeting is the goal or goals and the policies. They vote those. And the rest of it can change as time goes on. That's what's going to make this a living document. So the goal and the policies are the, I hate to say feel-good sort of elements, because that sounds so awful. But they are the elements that are more generic, that we can live with far into the future, in our estimation, the way they're put out here.
I have a comment under the action items. On the, on the third bullet, which is to contract with an independent environmental risk analysis firm to evaluate Falmouth's vulnerability to flooding, wind damage, and other coastal storm hazards. I wanted to point out that the Board of Selectmen, back in 2002, I believe, created the Coastal Resources Working Group. And that group was represented by Rob Thieler. He's a world-class scientist at Huley, from the USGS, the Geological Services. He was the chair, and you'll remember these names, Dorothy Aspenwell, Bob Barker, Rocky Guyer, Joanne Muramoto, Beth Schwartzman, Charlie Swain, Jane Tucker, and Chris Weidman. And they were, and George Kalis was the town engineer, and Jude Wilbur was ex officium. And they prepared this document and this report. And this is really, this addresses the Falmouth South Shore this way, all the way up to Wacoit. And it has mapping, it has all kinds of really good information in it. And I went through it again over the weekend. And then in 2010, in October of 2010, the same working group with some different members, mostly the same members, were there, but with a couple of left out. And this is the future of Falmouth Buzzards Bay Shore, from the Coastal Working Group. And this was completed in October of 2010. And I was going to suggest that before we really get into any real discussion about it, that all of us should read both of these reports, because they deal with sea level rise. And they actually demonstrate in some of the maps where the sea has actually risen, particularly along the South Shore in Il Pond in Woods Hole. There are stone walls down there in Il Pond that actually demonstrate how much the sea level rose from 1934 or 33 until, until 2010, when they actually did this. And it was fairly significant. So we have actually some demonstration of sea level rise that we need to pay attention to. So I didn't make copies of this for tonight, but I was going to ask the town manager if he could make copies for both boards, so that we have this. And the next time we meet, maybe we could have this discussion about Bullet Item Three, along with what is in these documents. Sue and I attended the Climate Action, or the Climate Action Lecture? Is that what it was?
With Rob and Max.
With Rob Thieler and Max Holmes, last Thursday night, at the Woods Hole Research Center. And again, a lot of the work that they did, even putting this together, but it's really more up to date, they discussed there, and how Falmouth really needs to start thinking about its coastline. And this, and they use the same term, "resiliency." Not that it's any, you know, anything nobody knows about. But I thought it was very appropriate that that's what they used, and the town needs to really begin to take a look at that. So these documents, I'm going to turn them back to you, because I took them from the file.
No problem. We'll reproduce them.
There's also, there's also something that Marlene sent out to our committee. And it's from ACOM, Consulting Engineering Firm. And they're obviously doing it to gather work in for themselves, but it is an informative document. And that's, they're putting them together as educational documents. What they are saying is that the impact on us in particular, the Northeast, but us in particular, is going to be disastrous, if you read it that way. Three to six, up to perhaps nine feet, I think, Bob, if you recall.
I don't think nine feet.
Was it not nine, three to six? But it's more than people thought it was going to be.
On that topic, too, the Cape Cod Commission is doing some really forward-thinking, mapping, modeling, and really getting into the topic in terms of being a resource. And then the point, just to segue back to the, what Rob Thieler's research has shown, it's not a bathtub effect. In other words, that particular attention needs to be paid to, and different areas have different needs. So I thought that was very interesting and could be kept in mind as we're looking at policy from a, from a broad perspective, as well as from a specific locale point of view.
And to add on to that, I think Rob also pointed out that we cannot reverse where we are now. It is what it is. We can't do anything to change what's already happened. The only thing we can change is what happens in the future. And it was saying about that bathtub effect. So when the storms come, it doesn't fill up like a bathtub. It, you know, it's much more, I don't know, it's broad in terms of how the water rises. And the south-facing shores here really are very, very vulnerable. And the other thing they said was, both of them, both Max and Rob Thieler, that don't be surprised when something happens. Just don't be surprised, because it will happen. And don't think, oh, this is really horrible. It's, we have to watch out. Anything can happen, and just don't be surprised when it does.
This is the thing that we're going to be talking about FEMA later.
Okay, good. Well, enough for that. For that section.
Well, that is, however, the 100-year storm. But the 100-year storm could happen tomorrow. Just because it's a 100-year storm, okay, once every 100 years. But throw your dart as to when it's going to happen. So, you know, this is, and you and I had spoken about doing perhaps another Saturday workshop. I know a number of people had thought what we had done before was really good. And having Rob Thieler there and...
Well, just as an example, Great Bay, which the Selectmen have been discussing a lot recently because of the erosion and because of the damage that's being done to the road. And we've had to close almost that entire road, Great Bay Road. And I have not looked at those the second time yet, but Heather and I talked about them today. The material that Peter McConerty provided to us when we had a discussion on closing that last section of Great Bay Road is what you can see from those maps, the views, where the sand has shifted and changed. And it's, it just happens over time. Peter, did you want to say anything about that? Or no, that's okay. Anybody else want to comment on this, on this section?
I just want to, I don't know if I mentioned, I think it's the 21st of this month, August, the Cape Cod Commission's draft will be available online. So in conjunction with the printed materials that will be available, that would be another good resource to just take a look at it. It's quite extensive. And it's a different perspective where it is Cape-wide. And they just have a tremendous amount of expertise they're putting into this.
This is the 208 West Wood.
Yeah.
The draft will go online, day after tomorrow.
Just on a related but unrelated note, I know Marlene's not here, but we've been working with Julie and Brian on a project with Webner, which is a resiliency planning, which is about the administration of our governance and services in our community, and how we can make that more resilient in the likelihood, in the event of one of these storms. So we have our first sort of targeted meeting this week, talking with Public Works specifically about purchasing procedures to ensure that we are equipped and prepared and have the procurement in place for basic services like water and different items that might be utilized by the community and by the Public Works Department itself. So those are the one, one area that we're looking at, and we'll start to look at several others over the next few months. But that's part of a pilot program with Webner, where we're using a model that was used in...
And on that same note, our insurance carrier has a, part of the insurance plan is, if there is a disaster of that nature, because of the policies that the town has with that company, you can contact them. And for instance, when Munson was, had the tornado, Munson, Munson had the tornado a couple of years ago, they actually brought in a virtual town hall in a trailer, so that the, and with all these computers, so that the people who worked in the town, like in assessing and finance and planning and all of that, could work in this trailer and actually continue on the business of the town while all this was going on around them. So, and they can bring equipment in like that within a matter of three or four hours. They can have, I don't know how they bring it in, but anyway, they do. And that's what the insurance company provides. So that's, I guess, part of what you're planning. Yes, Jim?
Well, I just wanted to step back a little bit and go over some of the first two items. One of the, one of the things that we came on a local comprehensive plan in Dalywood that's dealing with their shoreline, that was really an education for me, is that restoring of internal wetlands way inside on some of these ponds can actually help preserve the coastline. And that is something that the Conservation Commission hammered home with us. And I think that going on to the next point is looking at what they've learned by rebuilding, by design, with what's happened in Hurricane Sandy, and doing that and see how successful those rebuildings of those same wetlands, if in fact it makes them stronger, some of the things that we really need to consider in some of our long-term planning. And just wanted to, we can kind of skip over those, just want to bring those up.
Doug?
Just kind of mention while we're on three, that the, I think it's a really very good thing, make a plan. The weakest point right now is the bike path and the surf drive section there. So I would say it's not even too early to consider, call it number three, for action or map. You can start coming up with an idea, what could be done, whether it be dunes, artificially make dunes, or some kind of barricade to raise that big gap, or whether bike path should be on some kind of elevated platform. I think we really need to get on that one, because we're going to probably just lose that one day. It'd be a huge resource to lose. So to me, that's number one.
And surf drive.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, surf drive, the bike path, that area around Trunk River, all along the shore.
Yeah, just on, and I pictured something like, you know, a gradual raising in the roadway, incorporated with dunes. But, you know, I think getting somebody on that right away would be best.
Did Peter or Ray want to comment on that at all? Because we have had this discussion before about surf drive and its, its location and how, how open it is to any kind of damage from any kind of a storm that comes that way. I mean, obviously, we don't have plans at this point, I don't believe, to, to do anything about it. But that, as you say, we should put it as a high priority on our list of an area to address. Ray?
Thank you. I think the primary issue with the bike path isn't really the bike path, it's the forest main, silver forest main that runs beneath it. So that services all of Woods Hole. If the bike path goes, then it's likely that the forest main would go as well. From an alternate route perspective, the town has to make some hard decisions in the foreseeable future as to what we're going to retreat from and what we're going to harden. So until those decisions are made, it makes it very, very difficult to be able to plan for it. Not to mention that when we do have a storm event, we're kind of restricted, that we can only replace in kind. So we're not allowed to change the actual structure of the transportation components after an event, especially those that are going to be reimbursed through FEMA or something of that nature. So it's, there are issues that we have to face. The coastline is eroding. And it's not just about the transportation component. There's the wastewater infrastructure, as well as the water infrastructure that's beneath the road. And of course, then we have that whole corridor down there from a public safety perspective as far as the response times on emergencies and everything else. So it's going to take, it's going to take a lot of looking at, and it's not going to be cheap, no matter how we cut it. So.
And I'm going to point out that we're not just looking at a 100-year event on this. It was 23 years ago that surf drive, right after it was repaved.
Absolutely.
Was lifted and thrown around like a ribbon.
Yep.
And there was discussion at that point, should we even repave it? And Jude Wilbur said, uh-uh, no way should we, because it's just going to happen again. So that's not even a 100-year storm that we're talking about. So I think the urgency is now, or 10 years ago, even.
Paul?
I think some very good ideas coming out. And the two reports you mentioned, 2002 and 2010, certainly are worth reading, as well as utilizing the resources in the community. And that probably should be a workshop, as you suggested. These are all action items that have been mentioned, and I think are very important action items. But I think what we need to do first is look at the goal and public policies and get some consensus on that. And then we can adjust the policy or the action items in accordance with those policies. And I think we have to present this to maybe town meeting this year, oh, this fall.
That's our plan, Paul.
But we have to get a consensus on the goal and objectives before we're dealing with all the implementation activities.
I think from our last meeting, we were pretty much agreed that this one was ready. But it would take a vote of the Selectmen, because you're the ones that have to recommend it to town meeting. And then town meeting has to vote it. And I will remind everybody that this doesn't have the force of a bylaw. This is a map for the future. So anything that is voted, you can't compel. It tells people what we have to be looking at and gives us guidance for the construction of bylaws or the construction of town policies that the Selectmen will promulgate. So the sooner that the Selectmen can say, yeah, this is ready to go, the better, because we do want to present this to fall town meeting. And remember, it's only going to be the goal and the policies that is presented. The rest of it is for your information and can be worked on and reworked, even after town meeting vote. Because as the plan goes, as we complete one of the action items, it goes bye-bye. And then we can put another one in, that we don't even have to wait to have somebody, one of these go away. If something is really pressing on us, we can put another action item in there. And by we, I mean, you know, the town can do that. So I just wanted to point that out. So the sooner you all can vote on that and say, yes, it's ready, then we can just tuck that away, it's ready for town meeting at that point. Now, the next one that we have done the most work on is land use. That one, we do not have an introduction done yet. But other than that, it's reasonably complete. The action items aren't put as statements yet. But the goal and the policies, we believe to be complete. But I think you didn't really see that in this format, to give your input on it. So whether you want to take a shot at that tonight, or whether you want to take it back and do your thing at one of your meetings, that's really up to you. But I know the last time, you took a shot at resiliency, coastal resiliency. So we could all get some input on that. So it's your call, Pat, on that, how you want to handle it.
Comments? Sam?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Establish a TDR bank. I couldn't find out where TDR was specifically.
Oh, it's Transfer of Development Rights. I'm sorry, that's shorthand. We probably should have spelled it out. And that is one of the things that, if we had that, it would act like a bank, so that we wouldn't have to do something immediately. It would keep accumulating some funds, or it would accumulate land that could be traded. So it's a concept that hasn't been fleshed out yet. And that's where some more ideas. Transfer of Development Rights is in 240, Chapter 240.
Okay.
So you can look that up and actually get what's under there. It's been used, what, Brian, twice maybe?
No.
Oh, more than that even?
Six, eight.
Six, eight, okay. It's not widely used. And that is one of the things that was brought out, that we should use it more. Let's say Little Pond Landing. There is an awful lot of development that could take place there. But because of the flood potential, I, probably it's not going to. But then the town can bank that... it's not going to. But then the town can bank that development right there and sell it to somebody else for increased development on another property. Let's say we want to do a lot of infill here. I'm just blue skying, you guys. I probably am making mistakes all over the place on this. Brian should be. Yeah, that's what I figured. But let's say we wanted to increase, do some greater infill here. Well, a developer might be able to take something out of this bank, pay the town for it, for the rights. And where a lot may be by rights, six units, that can be increased by payment to the town for the purchase of what has been banked. But you, you need to have that kind of a bank set up. And that's what a TDR would allow. But it would have to be reworked.
Do we know how many communities have ever used those TDRs? Do you know, Brian? Like has Plymouth ever done TDRs that you know of?
Actually Plymouth just implemented one.
What's?
Plymouth just implemented theirs.
Really?
They haven't had it for quite some time. And the, I'm trying to, Plymouth decided to.
Probably should be at the mic.
Oh, yes, because they won't hear you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
With luck, if this is a 180, it might pick them out.
Yeah.
Yeah, other communities in Massachusetts have them. We have it. We've had it actually since 1985. The first bylaw was written by Mr. Whitton. It was really, revolves around subdivisions back then. So, it's, it's a good, you know, 30, 30 years old. We were one of the first in Commonwealth Dusa. But Amherst does well with it. Some of the other Berkshire towns use it a little more than we do. It's used extensively in New Jersey, the Pine Barrens, you've probably heard of those. And it's used out in Lake Tahoe extensively, because you were actually banned from development, because you get into sort of takings issues. You have a right somewhere, a bond override somewhere to use, and they bank it and you can use it somewhere else. But yeah, so our answer is, yes, we have it.
And before you go, the first one on your list was to create a redevelopment authority? We could probably spend one whole evening just talking about that. Because you have to look at, you know, we are here on Cape Cod. Is that something we really need? Is to, can, I mean, we've been doing this ourselves for a long time. And we, I think we've been pretty successful at it, you know, the planning board has. Do we really want to get into a redevelopment authority? I know it's on the list for discussion.
It just depends on what you want to do. If, in fact, you want to have more infill and redevelopment, then you may want to look at that sort of implementation tool. Doesn't have to be town-wide, maybe area-specific authorities or whatnot. If you prefer not to do so, then it's a tool you probably won't, won't need. But that's to be, you know, fleshed out and discussed as time goes on. But some towns use them very successfully. There isn't another elected board. They have certain powers, but town meeting can either restrict them or grant them. It's up to them. So, there's various ways to look at redevelopment policies. Waymouth has one, Plymouth has one. They use successfully in some areas, the base, the Waymouth Naval Air Station, those areas. But they're, they needed something along those lines. So, it really depends on what you need and what you want to do.
But redevelopment is almost our future. We don't have a lot of areas for new development. So, what we're going to be looking at is the redevelopment of older properties or whatever. Comments? Anybody? No?
Yeah, the days of sub, large subdivision are pretty much over. You're probably gonna be looking at reuse and redevelopment, or, or anything else.
Yeah.
What I'm, what I'm looking here, what I'm looking at here would be the same kind of input that you all gave for the coastal resiliency. And right now, that would be on the goal and the policies. And I think for our listening audience, perhaps I ought to read it.
We should stick with that.
So they know what they're doing. Now, with the action items, this is nowhere set in stone or anything. This is just stuff that came out when our committee was discussing it. Marley took notes and listed them here.
Can I ask, I guess I'm confused as to whether we're gonna stay coastal resiliency, do that discussion, then move on to land use, or try to have a big discussion of all this at the same time?
I thought we had completed coastal resiliency. Are you okay with that? Or did you have comments on that, Doug?
I did have a comment on policy number one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, let's go back to that.
Then we should go back to that before we get involved in the land use.
I do worry that policy one does not, closes the door on the horrible option of having to abandon a coastal ecosystem. That there are circumstances in which we could say, you know, we have to give up. We can no longer protect that ecosystem, and we have to retreat. And I don't think that's given as an option under that policy. It says, we shall preserve or restore enhanced coastal ecosystems, and we're going to, the line that's out there right now, we're gonna make sure that stays the whole time. And I'm not sure that necessarily can happen. And the second is a more grammatical thing is putting, I know split definitives are allowed now English, in English, but I don't love putting the better in between two and absorb, to better absorb impacts.
We had talked about that, Doug, abandonment. And we couldn't put that, we can't put that in. It becomes an option under the action items, if it's necessary. When you start looking at a risk analysis firm to tell us, okay, what's the best way to handle this? What we were trying to do is maintain a positive outlook in the goal and the policies. And maybe we really should mention abandonment as a potential.
And maybe even just shall work to preserve, restore, and enhance coastal ecosystems. I think that's my preferred method, is that we're gonna do that. But right now, the way it's worded, we don't have that option.
So, shall work to preserve. Okay.
I see the word restore as taking care of that. Because if we have built on places that should be a natural ecosystem, then if that's abandoned, that would then be a restoration of that ecosystem.
Okay. I hadn't seen it that way, so I couldn't, I couldn't cover that.
Well, I see it both, but I think what you're saying is true, because that came up even last Thursday night with the lecture that, that we heard, that we have to think about that we may have to abandon certain resources, that we simply cannot either from, because of the nature of it, because of its vulnerability, or because of its cost, that it, it doesn't make, it's not realistic to think that you can continue to either maintain it or restore it. And you may have to abandon it. And we should be clear about the fact that that could happen. And, and we shouldn't take it off the list of possibilities.
So, it should go under a policy?
I think it should go under there.
Okay.
Heather, do you want to comment?
Unrelated.
Oh, unrelated. Well, let's get this.
Same issue, yeah.
I, I agree, because it's, it's always better to say what you mean when you're writing the policy, whether than, rather than to look up the minutes and see that you said that that should be included in preserve. So, as Doug suggests, I think we should include it as an option. It is realistic. I mean, surf drive comes to mind in, in terms of what was thought of in the past. And, and I think we should just state it. Fine. And we'll work on redoing that, I think.
I don't think we need to vote on it, but I think we need like a consensus that something we should consider.
Jim has.
Oh, Jim?
I just have a question of having the policy of abandonment. And what we talked about in our long-term planning is not preserving the roads we have, but the corridors we have, you know, the, the access across the waterfront. We tried to be much more general and not specific. And I am not comfortable in deciding now that we're gonna use as a policy to abandon. That's, I know that's what some people want. What we're seeing in response, and it's really early down in New Jersey and other areas, that they have, there's many, many innovative ways into dealing with these issues. They're talking about living reefs. We're way too early to just say we're gonna walk away. I'm not saying we don't do that. But I think that's a last resort. And I don't think it should be a policy of last resort right now. We want to be flexible, balanced, and impact on dealing with these. And I think the word abandonment is a little too harsh for my long-range planning.
You still included it in your last resort, though. It's still, it doesn't mean you, you don't use it as a last resort.
But not as a specific policy, see, like it not policy number one, two, or three or four. I mean, when it comes to, when it's the last resort, it's the last resort. But there, we don't even know yet. Yes, you could say surf drive's gonna go away, but we're not sure. Some of the things we're learning that they're doing from where Sandy is, they're building out further, that they're creating living reefs. They're doing all kinds of things. It's, we want to be innovative and, and looking forward and trying to do it. At some point, it may come to abandon, but, but I don't think, I don't like the idea of having an abandonment policy.
Ready up. Doug?
I think it's not too early to have a philosophical discussion about, you know, who, how many people feel like it's important to try and maintain that area access? Because, you know, when we hire a consultant to come in and advise us, he needs some guidance as to, if we tell him, hey, look, this is really important to us, because we've got our sewer main there. And if there's a way that it can be preserved, we want you to look toward that, if that's our consensus. Because if we just say, what do you think we should do? He's probably gonna just say, ah, just walk away, you know? Because he's not really as concerned about it as we are. He's just been looking at the, the new, modern things. A lot of, I think coastal geologists are saying, we'll never save it, so just walk away. You know, they may prove to be right, but I'm too stubborn to just say okay to that. So, I think we should decide whether or not we really feel strongly about trying to save it first and give guidance in that direction, if that's the case.
I, the only comment I have on that is that it's a matter of money. I mean, I think we have to, when you have a consultant and you have a, you know, a goal, you have to know the cost of the goal. That's what the voters are gonna expect.
Absolutely.
So, maybe we look at, you know, the cost of Plan A, the cost of Plan B, and, and so everyone would know what the cost of the ideal is.
And just make sure that he puts in mind the cost of relocating that sewer line.
I guess I'm trying to think of a much bigger picture, not specifically surf drive. But if we have a policy that says we are going to do this, for instance, the seawall that was down on Witsole on Wessex Bayside, where the people there wanted it restored by the town, if we have this policy, they could come to us and say, look, it's in your policy to do that. You have to do that, not us.
Well, as Jim said, there's other ways besides just building concrete walls now.
But it would be under the town's policy to take responsibility for that. That if we're going to preserve, restore, enhance the coastal ecosystems, and those are our only options, we, we have told the town how we are gonna handle it. And I think to have that restriction, maybe we're gonna be, maybe put in a position where we're gonna actually, actually, we may mistake, we need to change the policy because we don't want to do that. And I just worry that this is decided.
Well, maybe that's okay.
Heather?
Well, we, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
What the committee here became aware of is that we're gonna benefit from Sandy and New York's problems. Because they did have a contest, an engineering contest, that was looking for new and innovative designs. And when Jim mentioned this artificial reef, Bob said, well, Winthrop, where I grew up, now they got too much sand. They did that years and years and years ago. So, it's not a new design, but it is something we could consider for, say, surf drive.
Okay, Heather?
The only comment I wanted to make was, the preamble that precedes the four policies seems to address a lot of what the words are concerned about. But it doesn't relate to the policies directly. So, I wonder if there's a way to connect the preamble to the policies, because I think if you read the preamble and then read through the policies, the concern that you have is that each of these policies gets taken out and used outside of the context. So, if somehow we can have a statement that says, keeping this preamble in mind, the following policies have been adopted, so that they're always related. This is very specific, that it says, Fama shall retain its cultural identity by balancing use, access, and enjoyment of coastal resources while accounting for geologic and ecosystem shifts in response to weather-related impacts to sewer line. So, I think it really does nicely address a lot of what you're talking about. But if you take each individual policy out of that preamble, it takes on a meaning that perhaps wasn't.
That what you're calling the preamble is our, is the goal. We didn't label it as a goal.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So, that is the top thing. And then out of that flows the policies.
Okay.
So, we probably should label that goal, so it becomes very clear.
Related to our discussion here about a possible abandonment, it seems to me that we at least ought to look at a triage scenario for that hundred-year storm, in terms of where, what we're gonna prioritize, in terms of rebuilding and restoration. And I think from that will come that question of, what might we have to abandon? Because if these costs become so great, it would be beyond our economic ability to restore everything or bring everything back to the level that it was when the storm hit. So, I think it's worth considering a triage project, given a worst-case kind of storm, or the one we would, we would envision as a worst-case kind of storm.
Doug?
And also, as stated by Mr. Jack, we need to follow, so that we can have improvements when things happen, rather than just status quo. So, that's something we could work on now and make a policy and say, yes, it is our intent to improve that roadway and that bike path and maintain it, if that's our intent currently. But maybe then, there would be new guidelines and maybe a little more latitude by conservation when it comes time to do repairs.
I think of all the sentences that I have just heard, I think this makes the most sense to me. Because right now, I've got bubbles in the air. And each time I'm connecting to each conversation, one of them pops because something else happened. This is a solid answer to say that when you are working with something that you cannot predict, you don't know what it's gonna be, and you don't know where it's gonna be, and you don't know how long it's gonna last. And to make something in a solid statement is what you just said. And whether the words are used, goal, policy, preamble, whatever the words might be, the point is, we're working with something that we don't know exactly what it's going to be. And then, you don't want to be caught by words. Then you don't, as I'm listening to each person, they're all good suggestions. But I'm saying somewhere, it's very difficult to make a policy on something that you do not know exactly what it's going to be. And the words are solid words, and they're binding words. And I think we're trying to work with that. And I think this part is just fine for not knowing. So, I, I would accept this, that is what we know today. Will it hold in 20 years for any kind of a statement that we made? And I think that's what we have to decide. Because you can go into all kinds of scenarios when you don't know. So, it's, that's more the direction I would see, that as we do goal and policy, that that is what is sustainable, in my mind, right now with what we're looking at. And I do think Ray Jack just gave us something concrete when we're talking about the bike pond. But when you start to talk about, well, it could be, I think that's hard to put it in solid language. I think it's what you're gonna be responsible for when you don't know what's gonna happen. But you, somewhere, knowing in your mind, it's going to happen. So, it's, it's a tough discussion to, to say, as you're looking at print, and you're thinking, and you've got a visual, I think that's a difficult task we have. But I want to keep going and hear.
That is why the goal and the policies are, I said feel good, that's terrible.
At some point, we do.
They're more generic statements that can lead way into the future. And when we talk about the more specific things, then that gets into what the town is going to be working on, because we know it's gonna happen. The sewer's gonna be washed out. We know that's gonna happen. It probably doesn't matter how much armor along there. It's, I don't know, engineering-wise, whether you could prevent that or not. But Mother Nature has a way of laughing at us a lot.
Well, I mean, basically, we don't know the what, the where, the why, or the how. So, I think the more that these statements are general in terms of a response, I think they will serve us better. The less specific and more general, that will help us deal with anything that occurs at any time in the, in the, in the future for which we are now planning, because we have to review it from time to time.
The specifics are the action items.
Yes, Bob.
On our committee, we talk about putting together a toolbox. Tools could be changes in conservation. It could be changes in how things are rebuilt, changes in bylaws. So, those are the things that we think are probably the most top priority to do, so that we don't get caught with our hands behind our back. So, that, for me, that's one of the main focuses on what we want to do with this local comprehensive plan, is to create that toolbox so that we aren't caught flat.
And we don't want to have a toolbox. And we don't want to have a toolbox without a hammer. If we don't write the word abandonment, however we do it in here, that tool's not in our box, and that could come back to bite us.
I guess the reason I would also put the words work to is, I do agree that that is what we should be trying to do. I think a lot of, or at least let's find out if that's what the town of Falmouth agrees to. Do we think that maintaining what's there right now is what the town wants? And if we do, and I think most of us do, we can say that, and that's our goal, but we haven't tied our hands and said, and we have to do that. That we all believe that's the best thing, but we know something else could happen. And I would agree, I don't want to put the word abandonment in. I would just like the language saying, we haven't said, this is the only thing we can do.
Doug?
Yeah, Doug? What kind of action could we take in the near future that could enable change in the way that we manage that stretch, so that Mr. Jack would have more tools in his toolbox when a event happened? Because each time it happens, he's devoting manpower and energy to a simple repair, where as if he had permission to put sheet piling, for instance, for one thing, or who knows what other ideas he would come up with. But if we have a strategic policy for that endangered coast, then perhaps, little by little, as each time we have an October nor Easter, when there is some damage, he could say, okay, it's time to work on this next phase of, you know, whatever it is is in line for.
That would be included in the enhance the coastal ecosystems. If we're saying, shall work to enhance them, it could be, next week, we are going to enhance that ecosystem so it's protected better than it is right now. And that could be a future plan, as opposed to merely reactionary.
Right. And then also, if, if we thought deeper and had a plan for maybe beach nourishment or some kind of deeper reinforcement along there, I'm just thinking that, it seems like there's something we could come to consensus to now, and they could move that forward, because we are a little behind on that stretch. And it is a matter of time before something happens.
Peter?
Good evening, thank you. I came in a little late at this meeting, and earlier we were talking about a single project that we do have Great Bay Street. And I know it was mentioned that policies being prepped currently for fall town meeting. I think Great Bay Street is going to be one of those projects that's going to be probably first on the list, because we do have a project I was asked by the selectmen to do a presentation in the next month about some of the repairs that we can do to Great Bay Street. It's a long street, it's a couple miles long, with some serious erosion going on the roadway. And the fixes that they're allowed, a soft fixes, they're not hot-humming fixes, and some of those drops could be 20-foot drop. So you, depending on the storms, you might get three years out of it, five years out of it, seven years out of it. But that's one of those, that's one of those roadways that we're going to be looking at, that, you know, if we, I think it's going to be some, I'll have a funding source when I do that presentation another month, but I think that's, it's going to be costly to fix that, that one roadway. We do have other projects on Surf Drive and on the bike path, just that one roadway alone.
That would be a good example of how what we have to do kind of fits in with this, and maybe tells us, are we getting the right direction? Is this the right direction we need to go in based on a real-life occurrence right now? Bob?
I agree with Doug and, with Doug, that we need to be more proactive. We tend to be reactive to this. And I think when you listen to the town engineer and Ray Jack, and a document like this, I think, can help us in this, where we can say, we need to do this, and it's here, this is the reason why. So I, like I said, we need to be more proactive than reactive.
Okay, well, I think we need to move on to, because we should finish this discussion by seven if we can, to the, to the land use piece of it, to which we started and then got back to coastal.
Well, land use, I'd say at this point, don't pay too much attention in tonight's meeting about the action items.
Okay.
What we really want you to do is give feedback on the goal, which again is not labeled goal, and the policy statements, of which there are five. So if you have any thoughts on that, from your review of it?
I just have some questions. When you talk about land use, Falmouth shall use land appropriately to create places to live, work, play by encouraging sustainable and balanced growth. And then further on, there's some mention of convenient and pleasant. I'm wondering how we tie this to the day-to-day things that people are concerned about, which is, you know, how do we manage the traffic with the growth, so the people that do live and work here can move and park and go shopping and get bread? Also, how do we balance the services that, that, the new infrastructures that are increased by development? Fire, for example, with development of, you know, larger, you know, housing for people, older people, any kind of people. And then the historic districts or historic buildings? I'm just wondering, is this, is this the policy where you would address all those things? Is that what you have in mind, or no?
No, there are other elements, Sue. We do have a traffic element, we do have a historic element, that's the other one you mentioned, but.
It's a services.
As services. We do have various elements that cover those. And one thing that is extremely difficult when you're presenting a plan like that, when you're trying to put it together, is in fact, it's not just a plane, it's a web. And you try to put that into a two-dimensional, you have difficulties. When this is eventually done, what we're going to try to do is create a color coding that can better indicate the webbiness of it. But I've got my fingers crossed that it's going to work, because when you put land use and you separate it from housing, how do you do that?
Right.
Well, land use, when we looked at it, we, the committee of three had this wide-open map of Falmouth with nothing on it. And if we were just a piece of land, what would we do optimally to develop it? To a certain degree, Mashpee had that when they had the Wonga Nod land suit. Because when we were pressed in the 80s for development here, it was reach there. They couldn't do anything while the suit was ongoing.
For 10 years.
Mm-hmm. So they had that included in development. But, so what we're saying is, by this blank map, well, if you were doing it, how would you develop it? And it was really interesting that the three of us came up with something almost identical to each other. And I'd say, you know, just do that for an exercise at some point, just you people, and see what you come up with. Because what we came up with was, well, we really want to encourage, and Ken Foreman tried to give this pass through town meeting a long time ago, way greater acreage in the whole Hatchville area. That would be amenable to agricultural usage. We would want to see development density here, because it's on a route that we could have sewer, we kind of drew in maybe potential sewer lines. And so we did all of that with an exercise, in how we would like to see development. And what really surprised me is that the three of us had this same kind of vision. Now, that is an overarching land use policy that we're talking about there. It has nothing to do with how the sewer eventually comes about, and how it's expanded. But there were certain things that we really did come up with, to keep in place. And it was also surprising, is it's, it's the tendency that Falmouth had to develop in that manner before we hit the sprawl. So that's the kind of thing we're talking about with land use. We have the housing element. Well, how can you separate housing from land use? You separate it because we have certain housing needs that we're going to be looking at in housing, that we're going to try to encourage through zoning. But if we have a land use vision, then the zoning fits into that land use vision. So if we don't want to have dense development in the Hatchville area, then we look at, where do we want to have denser development? How does zoning make that happen? How does the infrastructure fit? Do we have the infrastructure? Is this where the infrastructure has to be put? Do we, we're looking, let's put another piece of the web here. We're looking at the peninsulas that come out with the great ponds, their low line. Those were all farmlands. A lot of them were strawberry fields, and, you know, there were truck farms, whatever, in there. Now, let's say we get that 100-year storm. What are we going to do there? Because we've got very dense development on each one of those peninsulas, and we are talking about putting sewering down there, we've got water mains down there. What if those were all destroyed? Now, Doug, this is where your idea, does this come into abandonment, then? How do we look at land use? Is that a policy that we're going to say, well, if all of that infrastructure is washed away, what is the town's responsibility to build it all? Well, it can be washed away tomorrow. These are the really tough decisions that we've talked about as a committee. How do you do it? Talk about expensive. So maybe if it's washed away, well, if you do it at your own expense, we can't prevent you from building your house on your own land. But is it the town's responsibility, then, to put a new water main in to complete the whole sewer line again down there? Or do we say at that point, we've got to talk about abandonment, because we're not talking about a $60 million project that we're going to do, and it could be by another 100 years from now?
I know you're kind of talking rhetorically.
I am.
But that's where resiliency comes in.
Correct.
Yes.
So that's why I'm talking about, we've got a web that we're dealing with here. It's not just as simple as you might want to make it. And land use is one of those bases of this web.
Are you interested in some feedback, specific feedback on the policies, then?
I sure am, yeah.
I guess, the specific things I found, policy number one, I liked until the word innovative, at the point I'd stop there. To then say, to improve the quality of public streetscape, seems to limit what the policy is doing. That, is it, is that, is only modifying innovative?
I see what you're saying, cross out innovative.
No, I just cross out to improve the quality of public streetscape. I would say, shall continuously analyze the zoning rules that guide development to ensure they are flexible, fair, and innovative. Period.
Okay.
Policy number two, both convenient and pleasant are very judgment-based words, that I would have an issue having a policy, because what I think is pleasant, what I think is convenient, is not what anybody else is maybe. And those two, just two words struck me as very hard to deal with in a policy, to say, well, I vote for this against this because it entered the policy. In addition, what are the words I'd suggest to put in there, which isn't very helpful, but.
I don't strike them.
I don't strike them.
And maybe just individual suitable.
From by on.
Yeah, good idea.
Village is the more important aspect. We, we were talking about, we have these little nodes of development that's historically been part of our town, and we're trying to preserve that. And we, we think they're both convenient and pleasant, but they don't, they're.
Still have the same.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
I think the adjectives are unnecessary.
Right, that's five.
The other are some comments on policy four. I don't think we need to accommodate just access to cars, or just accommodate many modes of travel. And policy number five, instead of say discouraging, to discourage. So Falmouth shall encourage increased density permanently to redevelop in some areas, and discourage further development in others.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't get your number four there.
Strike the comma.
Strike the comma.
Doug, go back to the first one, and say what you would strike, because it sounds good, but I didn't.
Everything after innovative.
Well, let him, yeah.
Full stop after innovative, and then strike the rest.
I think what he's doing is removing the purpose, the goals, the goal statement from it, just simply making a statement of what it is, yeah.
This is the kind of editing we do, going back at it. And that's what I'm asking you to do tonight, to give us straight.
Okay, number two, Doug.
Strike convenient and pleasant.
Okay. And use, just go to villages, okay? Number three?
Number three I didn't mention, but I guess I should. I guess, I'm struck a little bit by the wording, high-quality and.
Durable.
Is it durably built, is it?
We had trouble with that, and I'm really going to look for your input on that, because what we're looking for is, when you look to Europe, and you look at the centuries-old buildings there, that are still being used, and you look at our development, say, from the 50s, and the houses are rotting away, and the windows are falling out. That's the contrast that we're looking at. So we're trying to encourage things that will last.
Couldn't you just remove high-quality and durable, and say, a built environment that respects the culture of the community?
Isn't environment even the right word either?
I don't know. I can tell you what motivated that statement, and we have gone back and forth on that multiple times, having a great deal of difficulty expressing what we wanted to express. When we, an example was Dr. Tripp's old house there. Well, when they got into the guts of that, I mean, there was a tree in there, and I think the bark was still on it, and form one of the main structures in there. There was a well inside. That thing has been here forever and ever. They gutted the whole thing, they were able to put, what is it, three apartments in there? That's the kind of thing we're looking for, and we were really frustrated with how to express it.
Shall encourage high-quality and durable construction.
Solidly built.
Quality.
Well, that's what we meant, just changing the adjective.
Yeah.
Well, durable, durable's not an adjective. You'd be, durably built could be, but solidly is more commonly.
Solidly built, high-quality, solidly built.
Just more common.
Just solidly built and leave out high-quality.
Or I'd say, and solid construction. I, I guess I don't know what built environment means.
That's a common term, is it?
Yeah.
Planning, that's a common term.
It is. A built environment.
Built environment.
Streets, buildings.
Planners.
Use materials other than what we're using today.
Environment is a thing.
Well, if the environment isn't working.
Just some latitude when we're doing designer review and saying, gee, you don't really think you should build a, construct a building out of cardboard. Could you consider some better quality materials to go with our planning objectives? I guess environment also allows it to be landscaping in addition to construction.
Yes, Doug. I can give you a perfect example, the siding they used on the high school, that's not going to last. Right? That's like my Kenner erector set that I had, used these plastic panels on it. So.
Okay, Doug, do, well, policy three, then, let me say that.
What, your question?
Policy three. What, what words do you want to strike then?
I guess what I'm hearing is, Falmouth shall encourage, I'm not sure whether A is necessary, but high-quality and solidly built environment that respects the culture of the community.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's move to the next one.
Four.
I'd just strike the comma.
The comma from our four and five, is going to wrap this up.
And I would strike the comma after redevelopment and change discouraging to discourage. Shall encourage increased density permanently to redevelop in some areas, and discourage further development in others.
Right. That makes sense.
Okay. So we'll bring those back to our committee.
Yeah, bring those back, and then we'll have to.
Ask you to look at the action items, too, so we can get, because all of this together allows us to put preamble together for that. And what you will find is that the housing is really very much sketchy, because what we've got now, that will be presented on the 21st, is the Housing Needs Study, that was done by our K G Associates. And that will give us some more definition. Because, okay, the goal is good housing for everyone. Well, you know, it's, in a way, a placeholder. It's not as defined as the goals and the other. And we've got three policies here, maybe they'll stand, maybe we need to add more to that. But I would ask you to look at that and give your input. We have action items that are obviously going to be added, too, I would assume, based upon the study. But, so this is very much a work in progress. What we are definitely hoping to do for town meeting, fall town meeting, is coastal resiliency and land use. We hope we'll be ready for housing, and we would ask a placeholder for that.
Madam Chair, the board hasn't, has not yet received that.
Right.
The housing piece.
Right.
The selectmen have not yet, just want to be clear.
No, Marlene just forwarded it on Friday. So I haven't even looked at it. That's how new it is.
Okay, any final comments, Jim?
Just wanted to make one thing about an action item that keeps coming up in our conversation all the time, is the limited by-rent use of accessory apartments. We keep hammering this thing around as the greatest way to solve some of our housing projects. And this one keeps coming up as one that we don't have to spend a lot of money to if we can find a way to do it. And it just comes up over and over and over again. And I just wanted to reiterate that. We're not done, but this one seems to be coming to the top every discussion we have. So just keep, keep in mind, that's, that, we, that probably be back. So just keep in mind, that's, that probably be back pretty hard.
Okay. Well, I got to thank you for this. This is moving along, it's very well done, it's very thoughtful. Appreciate all your work.
Let me thank the selectmen for all of their input. This is a wonderful exchange going on here between the two boards.
I agree.
I think you're right, we're two out of two.
Well, I think it's ironic that we both struggle over the same things.
I guess.
The same phrases, I mean, we would go back and forth on the same things.
We did a good job then.
And then we'd throw our hands up, go out, it's like a snooker deal.
I think it's an indication that we're really on the same page. And we all think in a way, not alike, but we're thinking in the same direction, which is really important, it's good for everybody. Okay, our next is a brief report from Brian on the status and the impacts of the FEMA regulations. Brian, we still get so many questions from people in the community about insurance rates increasing and all of that, so.
Well, Pat, you know, the new mapping took effect back on July 16, I think it was. Congress has put a hiatus on some of the premium increases, they're going to study it for a while, get us past the election, I mean, get us past those issues. So I could tell you that regulations have been adopted by the Conservation Commission to implement those maps. The planning board voted at its last meeting to bring an article to the town meeting to eliminate zoning by, so we don't have redundant. And so that is where it stands right now. The town has new maps, the town has a new set of regulatory environment with the Conservation Commission. And we'll see what happens after, as things progress with regards to premiums. As you know, we don't have any direct role with premium issues, but it is something that affects our residents. I know there is some discussion with regards to reinvigorating or looking at the community rating service again. I think we've had some initial discussions with some folks from FEMA about that. It is a very labor-intensive, staff-intensive thing to do. We did it back in the 90s, planning department. Brett Lamb was our CRS coordinator, did a fine job, but the then-town administrator decided it was a strain on our resources. So that's where we stand at the moment, I may have to answer any questions, or I know I'm going to have to.
Well, I just wondered if you've had any feedback from residents about their concerns? And if.
I haven't had a lot of direct response or questions. I know I've had my friend Dan Shearer come in, discuss the maps with me, residents or concerns about their, it's something that may not be affordable, they may have to self-insure, and some folks might be able to. I haven't had a lot of folks coming in to see us about their insurance premiums. A lot of question about what does this mean? What's an A-zone as opposed to a V-zone? There have been some instances where other government entities have come in to discuss some of their plans down in Woods Hole and velocity zones. We'll have to further those discussions as the coastal resiliency policy is evolving.
Well, so if residents.
But we haven't had a lot of, I haven't personally had a lot of phone calls with regards to insurance.
That's what I guess that was my question, is if residents have questions, where do they go?
If residents really have questions, they should be going to talk to whoever their real estate advisors, or insurance broker, their attorney. We can't really advise them as to do. Oftentimes, you know, it's a requirement of the federal government, if you have a federally guaranteed mortgage with a bank, on behalf of a federal government requires this insurance. Many mortgagee banks and lenders, an abundance of caution required, even if the structure's out. A portion of your property is in, they're underwriting criteria such that, you have to get insurance. We have a lot of those questions. My house is out, but my land is in, why do I have to apply insurance? That's your, talk to your lender.
Okay, that's a good advice. Jim?
I deal with this every day.
I bet, yeah.
I can tell you that probably some of the most significant impacts appear in, there's some areas in West Falmouth that have greater impact than this part of town because the numbers are higher. There's an AE zone in West Falmouth that's 18, and there's a velocity zone that's 18. If you're in the velocity zone, and your house is at the 10-foot level, which many of them are right now, you can look at the geography map and see they're at 10 feet, and the, your, the velocity zone comes and puts you at 18. The new state code says your lowest structural member has to be two feet above the 18, so it's 20. So imagine walking into your small little cottage, down on ground level at 10 feet, it's been there for 100 years, never flooded, and now it has to be another 10 feet in the air in order to get it out of the flood zone. Or you pay horrendous flood insurance. To make it flood compliant is a huge impact, and it varies as you move inland. But the houses around the coastline and those numbers, the two things you've got to remember, and we're just learning this right now, it started July, and it's just impacting. But it's really significant, there's a couple, there's lots of beautiful old homes that have been places for 100 years, that if they want to make them flood compliant, they've got to put them up on stilts like Surf Drive in order to comply with this building code. So these are state codes, and we're having a hard time with it.
Brian? Yeah. Are these the issues that have been held in abeyance for four years, while they look at the formula?
Yeah, if you do certain improvements to your home, over 50% of its value, then certain building code standards apply. But we're not coming along to someone at elevation 10 saying you have to now elevate your structure, you have to have a certain event take place, it has to be substantially improved, or it has to be substantially damaged. Typically, it's 50% of the assessed value. So if you want to improve your home, we saw this after certain events, you come in with a 45% improvement of its value, and next year you can do another 45%. So there are ways, there are no such thing as a bulletproof regulation. But certain properties, no doubt about it, have gone from A-zones to V-zones, are going to have a enhanced insurance premium reliability. But the state building code or the building commissioner isn't coming around saying you've got to elevate your structure, and all sorts of things happen. That may not.
The other thing I wanted to mention was the County Extension Service was looking to provide a rating, what do you call them? Rating supervisor, rating manager, rating, somebody who helps people with ratings, surveying the different towns to see if any towns, any towns would like, would be interested in having someone help their community do the ratings. Don't ask me, I, well, if you have questions, call Bill Clark, he can help you with the answers.
Madam Chair, Jen McKay, our conservation administrator.
Yeah, Jen.
Is with us as well, and as town planner Brian Curry mentioned, Conservation Commission, of course, has adopted these maps, and just wanted to underscore, not every community has approached it the way Falmouth has. Some communities have done it through their zoning code, which creates some very difficult circumstances with non-conforming uses in many places in the community. And we were able to avoid that through, in an action of this process with assistance and cooperation of the Conservation Commission. So maybe perhaps Jen could make a few comments about the adoption process of the Conservation Commission, which has stepped up and is the, essentially, the agent for adopting these maps, which the town is required, of course, to adopt, and we are in full compliance with that. And all of these challenges we're talking about are faced by, of course, every coastal community, as we're well aware, and the answers are still being sought. So I thought Jen might make a few comments about that process, it might be helpful to give a complete picture as well.
Well, thank you, Jen.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I'm Jen McKay, Conservation Administrator. Like Brian said, we adopted the maps on April 2nd, they became effective July 16th of this year. We worked with the town planner, DCR, and FEMA representatives through them to incorporate the language that they specifically wanted, which was, our old regulations cited the most recently available maps, and FEMA required the specific panel maps to be identified in the regs. So that was one of the major changes to our regulations, as well as the section that deals with AO zones or the barrier beaches, we added the language of alterations to landforms. But we did that, the Conservation Commission held about five public meetings, and in the end, adopted them right before town meeting. There's not much to say other than that, we just did the basics that we had to at this point in time with the regulations to get that to a place where FEMA would accept it, so it can be removed from the zoning code.
How does that affect the residents? Does it, I mean, the homeowners?
Well, some, the Conservation Commission always had lands, we call it land subject to coastal storm flowage, it's the FEMA flood zones. We always regulate that, that was always within the Falmouth wetland regulations. So just the changes to the maps increased the number of people that are subject to our regulations.
More work, in a sense.
We were going to have to address it anyway, so it makes sense to have it within the commission's regulations.
Sam?
This only applies to new development.
No, redevelopment as well.
redevelopment, sure.
Any property within the flood zone is subject to certain performance standards within the commission's regs.
Any questions? No, thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this topic? Then we'll move on to a discussion and approval of the scope of work on the Main Street Plan, part of which is being undertaken by the Cape Cod Commission staff. Who's going to lead on this one, Brian?
Brian. So at your last meeting with the two boards, we had discussed this document, we had handed it out to the two boards, and I'll just go over it again briefly. Essentially, it's a scope of work that the Cape Cod Commission would undertake for a, essentially, two big tasks. It's task two, it's a redevelopment plan for the Davis Straits corridor between Scranton Avenue and Jones Road. They are going to look at certain transportation infrastructure analysis in that same area. Please note that they will probably only be looking at data collection and road registry type work, because we are going to be, we actually issued a request for proposals for that larger scope of work from Palmer Avenue out to Oxbow Road. We'll have the work closely together, but most of the design analysis and data analysis will be done by that consultant. And lastly, task four, they're going to look at an environmental analysis, the commission staff, that is a Greenway corridor over, behind the mall, up to the Jones Driving Range, T-Ticket Park, that whole corridor to look for all the benefits associated with the Greenway, for flood storage, and for public access. So if there are any other comments or questions the board may have, obviously, the schedule will change for this, they had anticipated a June to January schedule, but by looking at a fall-spring schedule at this point with the commission. And this is a phase one, just so you know, they're going to be looking at these areas all along this corridor. I know some folks want to go all the way out to Oxbow Road, and all the way over to Highfield Hall, but, you know, you have to have, you can't make birks without straw, and it's a very large scope of work. So we're starting here, we won't do anything in isolation. One of the key tasks that the commission staff will have, if you look on page three, under task two, the first bullet point. One of the things they have to do, they identify unique features of the area and ways to differentiate character from surrounding areas. They actually have to look at the whole corridor. How's it different from Main Street? How's it different from East Main Street? How's it different from T-Ticket Highway? Where are the similarities, what's the differentiation? We weren't envisioning a homogenous zoning scheme or redevelopment scheme from Highfield Hall all the way out to Oxbow Road. In fact, we didn't want to compete with Main Street when we looked at East Main Street some 10, 12 years ago. We wanted something different, or we didn't want something identical. So that's what they'll be doing for us as part of their scope of work. If there are questions, if we have to answer them, if we can have them move forward. I know there are some members of the planning board who would like to see them start this, start this scope of work as soon as possible.
I think we should really define, when we say the Cape Cod Commission is doing this, I think it's helpful to actually define what that is. It's the planning, the planning department? The, what they call the reset, is it the reset team?
If you look on page seven, you'll see the project team.
Okay.
And this is the commission staff who will be assigned to this project. And I'm always happy to see Sarah Cordger's name lead the way, she's terrific. Phil, that's, he's a Falmouth resident, does a lot of work with their community design issues. Otherwise, they have a lot of transportation and environmental folks, and they all obviously have their deputy director overseeing them, properly, providing the proper leadership, motivation, all that stuff.
Doug?
Just with the redevelopment of East Main Street that we did 10, 12 years ago, I would hope that would certainly be worked into, I mean, it's not listed as a part of their task, but I would want to make sure that they saw that that was a part of.
Yes.
This person also.
Yeah, we want, we want them to use that somewhat as a model, because it worked very well. We went out and visited all the residents, all the businesses, we got the chamber involved, the selectmen were involved, the planning board, I thought, did a, under Dr. Foreman, did a very nice job. Yeah, they won't do anything in isolation, we'll make sure they do the due diligence, that's their first task, front there, never reinvent the wheel task, background research.
It's never been that documented, but I want them to be.
When you think about the corridor, you talk about, we talk about East Main Street, and then we talk about Davis Straits, and then we talk about Route 28. And they have beginnings and ends, although nobody really knows where one begins and ends in the other, but they have distinctive appearances, in a way. East Main Street is different from Davis Straits, and then Davis Straits is different from Route 28. So it would be nice if in the end, it could all be one word, in a sense, or one name, so that it has a sense of continuity. Is that, I suppose that's, I mean, I like the name Davis Straits, maybe it should all be Davis Straits, but it should have a clear understanding that everybody knows this is Davis Straits, and this is what is located in Davis Straits.
I always remember a great debate.
What is it, the furniture, was it a furniture company, Davis, was that, the Zelensky House?
There was a Davis Furniture.
A what?
There was a Davis.
The old Davis.
Furniture company.
The CBS.
Yeah, near CBS.
And, so apparently, Mr. Davis was a local mason.
Yeah.
Very involved in that.
Yeah, exactly.
And we can talk to the village associations about what they'd like to see in that regard.
Yes, that's right.
There you go. Yeah, because sometimes, different members of village associations think, well, T-Ticket begins at the Conveset, others have a debate about that, so.
That's true.
Oh, yeah. So I'll let the village association work that out.
I'm going to go back to task three, which is transportation and infrastructure. It seems like businesses, businesses come, you know, businesses change, redevelopment occurs, but I guess I'm never really clear about how the transportation element fits in with that. How much is the transportation changes, are they studied and looked at and revised? I mean, we have all these changes made, and all of a sudden, we find out we can't drive down the street anymore because there's so many people. So how do we look at that? I mean, is the commission going to look at that, is the town, as this redevelopment occurs along the, along this corridor?
Right, one of the things you don't, well, in graduate, in school, they taught us, transportation drives land use.
Yeah.
And then, oh, no, 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 land use drives transportation. They're very closely related. If you build a big road, oh, gee whiz, it's big enough to put in, you know, Digital Equipment Corporation, so let's build Route 495, so big. Or, gee whiz, we have all this nice, all these beautiful buildings, they need to be used, but they're a little bit too small. So let's take Route 9 in certain towns and make it four lanes, or Hanover, or some of these towns, and all of a sudden, you have increased the ability to increase the development, just like the sewers. So you have to be very careful about what you do. You don't want to over-design, you want to bring something in that fits your goals, what you want to see happening. So we want to redevelop certain areas of the community as a regional destination. A regional destination is the mall. You may want to consider then either alternative routes, alternative modes, you get what's known as systems management, the roads, and you get demand management, you know, how to get people there and out again. So they're not always hard solutions, there's sometimes soft solutions. And these folks are very expert in these things, that's why we're bringing them in for their expertise.
So you're saying traffic will be considered by, as part of the task three?
Yeah, so we, right, so we want to make sure that, okay, that's, we don't. Yeah, so we, right, so we want to make sure that, okay, that's, we don't want to see a four, well, I'll give an example, in a fine little town, I admire very greatly, Hanover, Massachusetts, that took Route 53 and just blew it up into a big road, or up in the town of, or the city of Waylon, you know, Route 18 equals, two lanes, or four lanes on Route 18 equals Route 3A, was the thing, the cause back then. So we really want to be very careful about what, how we design our land use, our zoning, and how it fits the iterative process back and forth, and you find a solution that fits the community's goals. But it's not one size fits all.
I have a very indirectly related question, this is, came up with another issue. What about the roads that are state highways? How much can we do with them? I know we've had one constituent who wanted us to change the speed limit on Woods Hole Road, which we can't do because it's not a town highway, town road. The same thing here in Route 28, how much freedom do we have to actually do that?
Well, it's controlled by the, by the Mast Dot, obviously. We, I think, have a pretty good working relationship with those folks, both in Boston and the district in Taunton. Sometimes it just takes a little convincing, but they have their role to play, because it's a road owned by the people that come out, and they have to build a certain standards and whatnot. But we'll, we'll be able to, I think, at least exert considerable influence. We may not have the ultimate authority, because it's a state highway, but that's why we have our elected representatives, both here at the State House and other places, to help us work in some of those realms. They have a very tough job, they understand, the folks in Taunton, especially the district, the Cape and other areas, sometimes need design waivers, and they've worked with us in the past.
Question, how much of the 16.7 million that we, are we receiving from the transportation bond bill, will go towards Route 28? Do you know, is that, or is this state, the part that DOT pays, is that part of the money from the bill, or is that at other funds, because of the project?
My understanding is there's a sum of, there's a sum of money set aside for Route 28, and a sum of money set aside, I believe, for Sandwich Road, and I believe the sum-
Brick Hill Road.
Brick Hill Road, Sandwich Road, something like that. My understanding is the level of effort here on Route 28 is about $7 million.
Seven million, that's from state funds?
Well, we had to talk to the district, and I guess it has to get through the tip process with the Cape Cod Commission, and the MPO, this is all the jargon you're gonna be learning, folks, because it might be match money for federal aid.
Oh, that's good.
So we'll go through that process, and Peter, and Ray, and others.
Now, did the bike waste money, was that part of, was, oh, that was the environmental bond bill, wasn't it, the bike waste money?
Correct.
Not the transportation bond?
That's another bond issue for the land and for the recreation. They considered a recreation component, not a transportation component, but we convinced them, back in 2000, that it was transportation, it's intermodal, gave it down to the Steamship Authority, convinced back then EOTC that it was transportation. If it's the, if it's the money.
Jim?
I just have a, I've discussed this several times, but just one food for thought. I would like myself to see it modified on Task Three instead of Scranton Ave. I know we've already done East Main Street redevelopment, but I think as long as we're doing this whole link, we should start from Shore Street, looking all the way down, is my thought process of it, because I think it'd be consistently rework that, that is the part of our town that needs the most work, and I'd like to see them revisit it. I know when they, I wasn't part of the planning board with it the last time, but some of the needs are still there. We have big, empty vacant lots, some of the development we've done there, I think could be better, I'd just like to have them change that one thing, instead of from Scranton, say Shore, that's my change of scope I'd like to suggest.
I remember you bringing that up before, and I think that your argument about consistency, and since we have the opportunity right now, really, you know, should be given a lot of weight.
And just for the transportation component.
I thought Shore Street was part of this.
Part of the whole thing.
No?
The entire plan.
It's not part of this?
Not the, it's got commission portion.
Not the commission part?
The view of this is from Scranton.
Part of the Mast Dot.
They're skipping, I guess the understanding is, we've already done the redevelopment, the business redevelopment zoning we did years ago, and that should suffice, and now we have to look at the other. I'm saying, well, maybe we should revisit the whole thing, is my suggestion.
Do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, one of the things, just to, just to clarify, is as part of this transportation bond bill, we of course have an RFP that's been issued, working with Brian, and with Peter, and with Ray, and others, where we will be selecting an engineering consultant, appropriately qualified, to handle all the mandatory engineering design and related planning to allow the town to capture the transportation bond bill money, so that this waterline improvements and all related, complete streets, as the concept is more recently called by Mast Dot, all the necessary improvements. So, there will be a few areas of overlap between the work that will be engaged in by this engineering consultant yet to be hired, and the Cape Cod Commission's work. So there's a dynamic interaction that, from a staff standpoint, we're gonna make, going to make certain, as Brian and others have stated, that it is compatible. So I guess the question becomes, in other words, these areas are all going to be included in engineering and design and related planning work, the issue becomes, where does the Cape Cod Commission effort specifically begin and end, and that interaction? But from the standpoint of staff, working with the, all the officials, we're going to make certain that all these areas are covered and that there is compatibility. So the question becomes, exactly what do you want in, and how much do you want to enlarge the scope? Because it will all be looked at as part of the process.
Right.
Just wanted to comment and draw your attention to page two, which is the work objective, which is very specific about what's with town, and this is a very detailed conversation between the planning board and the board of selection about what it was hoping to accomplish with this particular study, that the needs of the Scranton Avenue, Davis Strait, Westercourt area were very unique and distinct from those related to Main Street and East Main Street, and had not had the type of planning effort, background exercise, robust work by the planning board for a long time. And the planning board, I don't want to speak for you, but I think there was a strong desire from the board itself to focus on that area, and that grew out of the joint workshop back with the boards on a Saturday in the winter, if I recall, or spring.
Jim.
Was it last year? So that's what this grew out of. And this relationship with the Cape Cod Commission, we expect will continue. I think they know that, it's something that, if we, once we finish this level of effort, it's something that can grow and connect back to Shore Street and Main Street, but we want to make sure we don't dilute this effort by making it bigger than we can take on.
Because Davis Straits has had nothing. Last time we visited this was 1997. We're gonna look at that area, Spring Bar's Road, and Mr. Cord, Davis Straits, and Rose Street, because there's lots of single family homes in there. It's the last time we visited. Eventually, I'd like to be able to do what we learned with East Main Street, what's worked, what hasn't worked, work our way back towards Main Street. I'll leave it up to you folks, you know, it's up to you. My sense is, I don't want to dilute their efforts. Take a look at Davis Straits, and eventually, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna take a lessons learned approach of what went well on East Main Street, what can be improved. Because I think we've had some successes, and, you know, some unsuccessful, that's just, that's just the way it works.
Pat?
I really like the way this is. I understand the desire to expand it, but if you cut off too much, then your effort is too diluted. I really have great expectations of this, I'm afraid if we expand it too much further, just as Heather said, it's too much. And my understanding always was that this was the first bite at the apple, and then we'll continue to take bites along the way, because there's some desire also to have it go up the hill, Depot Avenue. And so I see, as Heather mentioned, just a continuing effort to have their expertise help us where they can with our planning effort.
And once you get the expertise, you can then add on the other pieces.
Correct.
I mean, it's not whatever they do is what we do, say is what we do, it's we get the information and say, well, we already know we want to do that in the previous work, let's tie it into that, and that's in your hands.
Right.
Brian, do you know if the complete streets program, the DOT program, was just for this year, or do you think it will go year after year?
It'll go for probably two or three years.
Two to three years? But this funding was just for this year?
Yeah.
So we could maybe apply under that same program in the future?
My understanding is, conversations with the district, are they looking at funding this on the tip multi-year?
Multi-year?
I think it's, I think at the linear, I think it's 18,000 linear feet, it's even too big for the district to kind of handle. So this is gonna be an incremental, stepwise type of approach here, both from the funding, standpoint from the state, you know, with the manpower from the commission. This is gonna take some time to do. And so the phone, do a quarter or something.
This was good, this year, we, we made some good headway, I think. Thanks to all of you guys, and Brian, and our team. Yes, Doug?
And such an idea-
And our team over here.
Planning study was, the contact is gonna be Sarah Cordger, who is the consultant, I'm surprised at that, I'm sure you want that, and rather than, I'd like to look at the planning staff.
I have a circle around that. We, Brian and I work very closely together on this, they like to have one point of contact. I certainly don't take any action without consulting directly with Brian first, this is really is a planning exercise, so maybe we can talk about that. I know, I just want to add-
It's gonna be a long term thing.
Yeah, well, I know the commission really likes to know that the executive board, the board of selection really is engaged in the work that they're doing, so that they like that the town manager's office is involved, but we don't take any action without knowing the planning board and planning staff is in full support with where we're going.
Have we said the final word on Shore Street? We've had our final word, because I'm thinking about what you're saying. But we, we are accepting it as it is right now, and there's possibility of change, but I'm thinking, I'm just visualizing that.
Well, we all want more.
Well, of course, we do have a deadline somewhere.
I'll bring it up again.
He will, we know that.
It's in my notes, still. So we'll, we'll move forward then, Pat, I'm not sure we need a vote, or it's up to you folks, so we'll move forward.
I think it would be in order, Madam Chair, if you'd be willing to vote to-
It says approval of the scope of work, so.
Okay, then, Pat. I approve of approval of the scope of work that's listed in our handouts here.
Second.
Any discussion on the part of the selection? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Madam Chair?
Same thing for the planning board, any further discussion?
Yeah, I think we have to adjust the schedule before you approve this planning report. This report is outdated, because it was done in May, but your schedule is, is not consistent with the current timing, so I think before you approve it, you have to get the revised schedule.
Well, I think we already approved it. No, this is just the scope of work.
Not the date.
Yeah.
That's part of it.
Well, yes, but it's a little more defined. Brian?
When we do the contract documents-
Yes.
We'll adjust it.
Yeah, yeah. As it is adjusted, we will approve the adjustments as they're made.
Further comments from the planning board? All in favor?
Aye.
So it passed?
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to our last item, which is a discussion of Shiverick Pond area site plan for the Carousel of Life. You happened to come, Jim, at a very appropriate time. As you know, the carousel has been operating this summer over at the Morse Pond School since July, and, but-
Molly Hall.
Pardon me? I mean Molly Hall, sorry. Molly Hall since July, and very successfully, I might add. It's gained a lot of community support during that time, and I think with the carousel, where they are right now, is they're looking for a permanent location. And Jim, do you want to just, okay, why don't you address both boards in terms of where the carousel is now, what you're looking for, and how Shiverick Pond fits into the, into the idea of what could be, put it that way?
The idea of what could be, well, as you know, the carousel-
Jim is the president, by the way, of the board of Carousel of Life.
You know, like Pat said, we've had a very successful run at the Molly Hall School Grounds. At this point, probably over 12,000 riders in seven weeks or so, we have one more week to go, thanks to the school committee that was so generous and thoughtful to give us that, a chance to show the community exactly what we're trying to do with the carousel. We've run it very successfully, we've shown that it's, it's safe, and that it's brought hundreds of hundreds of children and families and senior citizens into town to enjoy the carousel. We've given many free rides, as well as the paid rides, that we've had, we've had ninety year olds from Atria come, giggling like schoolgirls, skipping onto the carousel. We've had all the folks from Fair Winds come, we've given tickets to Falmouth Service Center, the Recreation Department Mashpee Boys and Girls Club, the list goes on, and it's just been very successful. You've seen a couple letters to the editor perhaps, and those are just, you know, two people that have taken the time to write, but many times we've heard parents say that this has been the highlight of their children's summer vacation, they keep repeating their trips. So, in order to keep this, the carousel in Falmouth, we have, we need to find a location that's financially viable, that will sustain the carousel for generations to come. We've located a section of land on, that borders Catherine Lee Bates Road and Shiverick Pond, that is available for purchase, and in order to make that private, that private investment, if you will, we need to see public investment as well, very much like when we did the Main Street project, I was the president of the village association that time, and we showed that we made private investment by building the performance patio at the, at Pagnon and Park, and many other events that we've, we invested in. And because we were able to do that, we ended up getting public investment in the form of a $4.3 million grant from the AST grant. We're asking the same thing now, in that we envision a gateway, if you will, down to Shiverick Pond, maybe on Post Office Road with banners, maybe different paving, and we'd like that gateway to lead to Shiverick Pond, which is a beautiful amenity that we have here on Main Street, which unfortunately, isn't seen by many people because of the overgrowth of the trees and such. Many years ago, Hamlin Pond was taken and turned into a path to go on one quarter of the pond, but we envision a pathway around the pond, and this was an idea that one of the planning board members came to us with, Mr. Dwyer, and, and, you know, it really fits in nicely with what we would like to accomplish, and that would be to create a walkway around the pond, take that piece of land, purchase it, and really draw people to that area. So tonight, we're asking if you folks might be willing to step up to the plate and help us to make that happen, and make it successful, so that we can keep the carousel in Falmouth where it really belongs, because it was hand carved by a local artist, as you all know.
Jim, are there any residential abutters to the lot that you're looking at?
No, there are not. It borders the school and the pond.
We're not, he's not looking for a permit, I think what we're looking at is kind of a vision of if it's possible for the carousel to acquire this piece of land, which really abuts the pond. And then the whole idea of the walkway around the pond is kind of an extension of Main Street, if you will, it had, people have a reason to go on the other side of Main Street, Catherine Lee Bates, and, and it actually opens up the beauty of the pond, not only to those people who live here, but for people who come here, because Falmouth is a walking community, and even in downtown, you have to walk the downtown to really, to really enjoy it, and we think that people would certainly want to walk Shiverick Pond. I know the school committee has to be involved in this, because some of that land, I believe, is contiguous with the, with the school, the Lawrence School as well. But I think what, what Jim is presenting to us is just kind of an idea and a vision of, of something that could happen, that could really benefit the town, as well as benefit the people who like to ride the carousel. So they're just kind of looking for some feedback. Heather?
Yeah, well, I'm curious, first, I want to say congratulations to you, and it was great- First, I want to say congratulations to you, and it was great to see you on the school property all summer long.
Thanks.
And I just want to get a sense of why the walking path from the western side of Shiverix Pond all the way around to the front side of Catherine Lee Bates Road is part of an economic viability plan for the carousel. And one, I want to comment that certainly connecting those schools to the Main Street area and the pathway that was the result of closing down a roadway behind the school is certainly consistent with, with, I think, some of the visioning that was going on at the time, creating a much more walkable community and creating a connection from public facilities to the downtown. But I'm, I'm not really drawing the, what the economic viability of the carousel is relative to being able to walk all the way around the pond.
Well, the carousel is only going to be successful if there's hundreds of people around who are available to see it. And that includes shops, ice cream shops, et cetera. Right now, being located at the school, it really was an excellent testing ground for us. And because it proved to us how important it is to be in, in, in an area that's crowded with people in order to, to bring in the revenue to sustain the carousel. As it stands now, even with twelve thousand rides, we're breaking even. We are making a donation to the schools and to the Falmouth Fund as well, but that's beside the point. So to answer your question, Heather, we need to attract people to that area. Just, if we were there alone, we're afraid that after a couple of years, it just wouldn't sustain itself. And that that's why we want to create a, that gateway and that walkway to draw people down there, to attract them to the carousel so that we can keep it running. Does that answer your question? Most.
I think it's a great idea, and also, we probably wouldn't like to do it because we don't like people walking around the pond, or if you want to use the carousel, trying to be able to complete your, your loop. I think it would be a big.
Completely, Madam Chair. The concept, I think, is very consistent with the community goals. What I'm not connecting is what the, the path from the Lawrence School area back down to the Shiverix Pond, how that.
We don't have the map.
How that generates the type of traffic that you're thinking about. So it seems like there's something, something missing.
It still needs the Conservation Commission approvals to get that happen. There's no way it's, I think it's a great idea. I just don't see how it can possibly be done on a full circuit around without using some pill to actually get it from Hamlin Avenue area over to Lawrence School.
There's a lot to be done, there's no doubt. And that, like Pat said, this is a vision, and we need to work together with the selectmen, the planning board, conservation, recreation, and all those people to make it happen. So this is a preliminary ask, if you will, to move forward and do some research as a group.
Well, back in the nineties, you might remember, that's when the board of selectmen voted to move Hamlin Avenue. And I was on the board then, and that was a huge, big. Yeah, it was, it was a pretty big deal. And it was, it took some convincing, but in the end, it's really, was a very good thing to do, really. And I think, I think what Jim is saying is when you're on Main Street, you see Catherine Lee Bates in the library, but you don't really see beyond that. There isn't much from Catherine Lee Bates right now. But if there were a walkway around the pond, and I remember Eddie Marks had the cupula from the Mullen Hall, from the Hall School.
Right.
Put right there as kind of a, a place for tourists, like an attraction. And, and it just kind of ties Main Street in with a pond, which right now, with the vegetation and all that, you hardly even see the pond if you were on Main Street. So this would open up that vista and.
You need to get permission to open that vista.
Oh, well, I know, I understand that. But this is just a vision right now. And maybe it won't happen, but maybe it could happen if the right people get together and say, how can we do this? Heather?
Can I use a word and see if it helps me? Are you thinking a boardwalk type of an area with a pavilion that's a little bit more active in use? Because that, that starts to make sense to me in terms of economic development. Might not comport with what some of the environmental goals are, but I'm just trying to, you know, get, connect with you.
You know, we, we, we'd have to get different town committees to come together and look to see if a boardwalk would fit. Perhaps, perhaps the walkway would only be three quarters of the way around, and where there's private property in a marshy area, we'd skip that. Or they'd have to walk down that, that road that connects Lawrence School with Hamlin Ave, perhaps, and avoid the pond if that was necessary. But, you know, let's, let's, let's see if we can at least take some time to design some sort of a plan. Maybe the walkway would go to the left where that property is, and then through the Lawrence School grounds, and it might stop where those couple houses are, not be a boardwalk, but.
Pat, and then Doug.
I think the concept is a winner. I think it was probably two or three years ago that my husband and I, don't ask me how we did it, through the muck and the brambles and all kinds of stuff, around the edge of the pond, we went back behind the school, and it was muddy. And I remember we talked with each other, saying, oh, my gosh, this really should be open for the public to use. You know, there was trash that had been thrown in the pond. It would really be a huge asset to the town, I believe, if that could be made usable as a walk around there. And I don't even remember how we did that. Somehow we went up Hamlin or whatever the heck it was, but we were just on an explorer, if you will, to where it all led to. And this has nothing to do with the carousel. I'm just saying, back then, we were saying, this really should be opened up for the town to use and enjoy. And I know what Heather is saying about a boardwalk. How do you deal with all that lowland and the muck and?
Services and the trash removal and the maintenance.
Yeah.
It's an expansion, yeah.
Yeah. And also, if you're trying to connect it along, between the post office and the cupula, how are you going to do that?
Yep. We'll have to find out.
I know. I mean, maybe you could suspend a boardwalk somehow along there, because you can't cut into the pond.
We visit Houghton Pond up in Milton often with my grandchildren, and they've just recently installed a boardwalk, just a small one. And they have little cutouts where you can walk out, maybe four feet into the, in the area, and they have educational signs along the way identifying the various wildlife that they see, some of them endangered species perhaps. And, and then you, you, there's also another consideration, a safety consideration, is that fishing spot over the drainage pipe there behind Eastman's? That's an accident waiting to happen. So that's, it might be an opportunity to expand on a fishing dock of some sort as well.
Is there a possibility that the sidewalk could be moved to the other side of the road and have the road moved? So that sidewalk that's currently there, which is not along the pond, but on the.
I see.
First Doug and then Paul.
I'm just curious if you could point out the location that you have.
That's right, Jim.
Yeah. Paul?
Since you've added me, I guess I should add some comments. A small citizen group has been looking at this for quite some time over the last year, and we're looking at a number of issues. One is, it is an unsafe place where the kids are fishing now. The concept was if you can put a little fishing platform on the west side and have a walkway connecting with the existing walkway, it'd make a lot of sense. There is a wastewater force main. Through that property, there's an easement that the town has that goes from the high school over to the pump station behind the.
Sitters Pond.
Eastman Hardwood.
Oh, east behind Eastman Hardwood.
Yeah, next to the chamber.
So there is a limited area there, but the concept was being bandied around. We looked at a whole bunch of things, looked at ownership, we looked at a number of different things. And this is in parallel to the Carousel of Light. Carousel of Light started looking at the same property. It made a lot of sense to talk to one another and enhance both projects. So that's kind of where this came from. We didn't go much further than that because it wasn't appropriate until we had some idea of the ownership and the availability and a number of other things. So I'm kind of very happy this is coming out now, and I appreciate the support that the Carousel of Light to give to this concept, because it makes an awful lot of sense to do that.
Right. And they bring it now because they think, Jimmy, you mentioned that the, not tonight, but to me before, that the carousel has a kind of short timeframe in which to make some decisions about where to stay, whether to stay in Falmouth or even to go to Mashpee, because as you can imagine, Mashpee Commons would love to have a carousel, but everybody would like, like it to stay here. And so this is the one concept that seemed to be more attractive to people and more, more of a possibility if it were worked on. Ralph?
Yeah, a couple of questions. What's the asking price for the property and how would it be financed? And second of all, could you consider remote parking over at the Lawrence School in the summertime only, with a shuttle or walking over to Main Street, if you have that path?
Well, we haven't established an, an asking price with the owner yet, and that's something that we would be purchasing, not the town.
The town would purchase?
No, we would purchase the property. We're willing to make that private investment. We're looking for the town to make the public investment.
I love Ralph's idea of really enforcing, encouraging parking at Lawrence School. Walk on the path to get downtown, walk on the path to get to the carousel.
That would be.
Saying that's good.
I think it's fantastic.
What about a long-term plan to cover it? Maybe give it some longer season use? Is, is that incorporated in this idea?
If, if we were to acquire that property, we would put a, a building, perhaps a pavilion with glass sides. You know, we would have to see and get our architect working on it. Chelsea Schinkel is here, she's on our board, and she's also a, a landscape designer, and she's drawn up, actually, a, a nice plan that, that includes a sixty-foot building.
So economic development, I'm thinking you could sell popcorn. That would be a drive.
So the building, and there's lots of possibilities. You could even have an addition to the building that you might be able to do birthday parties or corporate retreats and such. It's, they're, the building, the buildings, if you see them on, on the web, and I think I might have brought a picture, they're, they're just fabulous hexagonal-shaped buildings.
You've got a vision now of guys in suits going around on horses for, for the corporate retreat. That's just.
It puts everybody on the same level, right?
Exactly.
The CEO and the secretary and the janitor, they're all on the same level.
Oh, sorry. Really, the reason I was trying to get a handle on that is the, the walkway that's there now on Hamlin Avenue is not really a great place in the evening. It's dark, there are not, there are no streetlights down there. I don't think there's streetlights down there. And it's, you know, those overhanging trees, it's not an area that's really open in the evening. So I wanted to get a sense of what your goals were.
It used to be.
It used to be.
There should be lights there.
Are the streetlights there?
It was to walk my dog there.
I would envision lights all around the pond, to be honest with you. And the lights from the carousel reflecting on the pond. When I was a youngster at Lawrence High School, we actually had a sailing lessons there, and these little beetle cats were out there in the pond, and the, and the pond isn't used at all now. And you may recall many years ago, there was a gingerbread house every winter there. But, but yeah, I would envision the landscaping and, and the design so that it would be, it would be well lit and safe and so that people can use it all the time. Yes. Have there been any other lots that you've looked at? Falmouth is, is a tough, it's tough in Falmouth because we're so built out here downtown. The carousel has to be in a commercial area such as this. And there was one lot that we looked at, and the owner just took it off the market next to the school. And other than that, we, we talked about maybe Shore Street Extension at one point, turning it into a park. Still open to that. But other than that, we're really stuck, and that's the problem. And you look at a Mashpee Commons that's expanding even more, and there's plenty of land there. We're also talking to another organization in another town that has lots of land.
I think it's really worth being open-minded with all the effort you're giving to try to keep it in Falmouth. I think that's so important and really has to be recognized. You've really done that from the beginning and the, you know, your leadership in the committee, a lot of people put a lot of time into that. And look how much joy you brought to Falmouth this, just this summer.
You know, Don Terry behind me there, who's also on our board, he talks, he's always trying to convince people to just come down and hand out stickers for half an hour. And it just changes your whole day, it changes your whole life. We've brought, and that was, that, our mission statement says, to bring joy to children of all ages for generations to come. And we want to thank all the people in Falmouth who have supported the carousel and, and, and enjoyed it. And again, we just hope, we really want to try to make it happen in Falmouth. But we can't keep setting it up, breaking it down, setting it up, breaking it down every year. It's, it's not good for the mechanism, it's not good for our tired board of directors.
Pat?
I'd like to make another comment, too. With our development committee here, when we're talking about economic development and how we can bring new life into Falmouth, I've heard from outside sources that Falmouth is becoming known as a place to come for restaurants. Okay, and this is way off Cape that it draws people. A carousel, how many people does that draw in Sandwich at the Heritage Plantation? If we had a carousel here in town, how many people would that draw from elsewhere on the Cape to bring their kids here to ride the carousel? It would become an economic driver, I think. I don't know how to assess that, because it's not common that you have a carousel anyplace, to be able to assess it as an economic driver. But I'd simply like to put that thought out there, that, that could become an economic driver.
If I may, there are studies, and I don't have access to them right off the top of my head, that many towns have, who are in the process of revitalizing their community, the first thing they do is acquire a carousel, and that's the icon that they use. Saratoga Springs has a beautiful carousel, and, and that was one of the things that they used to, to draw attention to their town.
You know, how many, how many times do we remember as kids or having kids, they want to take that on the cleanup or just to ride.
Oh, yeah. My horses.
Make a special trip.
Rasslin', all my kids.
Sure.
You know, you're ready to have having twenty-dollar limo. You go anyway.
Well, and where they're proposing to put it, it's just right there. It'll bring people to Main Street.
It will. And it will also, I think, give people who are on Main Street another opportunity to do something other than just eat and shop. They'll be able to walk and walk around the pond and take, take their lunch over and sit on a bench or something like that. I think it just adds another dimension to, to town, to the town that is very appealing to many, many people.
Work off the meal.
Aside from the carousel.
The other thing is to recognize the importance of that playground next to the library.
Yes.
Paul, I think those two items complement each other so well, and I think we need to connect the two together to really, you know, take advantage of both draws. But, you know, I had out of town guests come with young children, and they had a ball on both playground and the carousel. So I think it, for families, it is a big draw. And gee, I would love to see that walkway around Shiverix Pond, only if we get a piece of the commons here in Falmouth, you know, if we can expand it out, make it well lit. I think it could be a very attractive feature.
Yeah. Well, I think what Jim is, and the Carousel Board is really looking for is just kind of, you know, keep on going, keep it moving forward and keep working on it. And maybe we, we can help him along the way at some point when they have to come for any kind of permits. But, but I, to keep working on it, because we think it is a very viable addition to the downtown. And it's that and also the, the idea of the, of the pond. So if we think that, I don't think he needs a vote, but I think people have spoken their opinions that hopefully give you the idea that there seems to be some consensus among the boards here that you should continue with the plan, unless there's something specific you would like us to do.
Madam Chair?
Which is not on our agenda, yes.
I, I have a specific question. If it's not premature for the selectmen, from the standpoint of this concept, of course, it, it does potentially involve, as Jim and others have mentioned, public-private, potentially public-private partnership of sorts. And my question of the board is whether the selectmen would be comfortable with the concept of devoting any of our staff resources in support of these interrelated concepts, not only the walking path as it's been our.
not only the walking path as it's been articulated, but also the, the interconnection there with the, the carousel, potential, potentially the carousel site and possibly interacting at that level. So that is a question that I, as town manager, have, whether the board would want to have that potentially explored from the standpoint of staff resources or further conceptual articulation on the part of town staff.
Doug?
I'm certainly enthusiastic enough about the idea of opening up access to Shiverix Pond with a walking path, almost not including the carousel. I just think it's such a great resource for people in downtown Falmouth who are coming to visit, to have that opportunity to walk around. I would love to see it happen. I just never thought we could because of the restrictions of pond vegetation and what we can do. But, you know, I would be supportive of asking some of our staff to be able to look into it, is even possible.
Anybody else? Sam?
Yeah, I, I think the fact that there's some parking contributed by the layout, the conceptual layout that you put together, as long as we could get an agreement that that could be available to public. I mean, it's so close to Main Street and restaurants, not only that, but the school. But that brings a little bit more, you know, capacity to this area as well. So if we can work as a private-public partnership with an agreement that that parking would be available to the public and not restricted in any way, as a way of bringing some contribution into our cooperation.
So do we want to let the town manager know that we support this idea going forward and of using town resources where appropriate to participate?
Beginning to explore that.
Oh, to begin to explore?
Yeah, exactly. I, I move that we approve exploring the possibility of this private partner, private-public partnership in supporting the relocation of the carousel to this particular site.
Is there a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We, we need a champion from the town.
Yes.
Just like Heather was our champion when we did our Main Street renovations. She took it by the horns, just ran with it.
She did.
We need some help running with this from, from your board, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Keep in touch. Thank you very much. Thanks. Anybody else want to make a final comment on that? No? Great. Is there any other business? We have to set a date for the next meeting, and I think you proposed a date, did you not?
Brian and I had talked briefly about a date in early to mid-September as a follow-up, conceivably dependent upon the availability of both boards and a follow-up particularly in the housing area. And I think your first meeting of the Selectmen is, I believe, Monday, September 9, and then you'd meet again, I believe, two weeks hence. I think I, we'll double-check the calendar here.
September 8.
The 8th, pardon me.
Monday, the 8th.
Yeah, Labor Day is a Monday.
Brian suggested maybe the 9th.
Meet on the, the following day, the 9th.
Tuesday, the 9th?
For this type of meeting.
How would that, does, how would that work?
September.
Okay, okay.
That's, for you guys, that's two nights in a row.
That's okay. Well, we know. Well, you guys have two nights in a row sometimes, too.
We'll be playing away. They'll be home on Tuesday.
All right, so let's aim for September 9.
September 9.
Okay. And we'll go over the, we'll work on the agendas, the four of us, and take this up again. Any other business? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? And you're adjourned. Oh, you're still meeting?
No.
Oh.